There you go. We're good?
Ready with you, Arthur. We'll call the meeting to order. This is May the 12th, a regular council meeting. And in attendance, we have a town clerk, Joanne Perry, town manager, Sandy Collins, councillor Jess Paul, councillor Gerald Perry, councillor Richard Kelly, councillor Craig Arnold, deputy mayor David Saunders, and mayor Doug Churchill. And we'll start with the regular council meeting of April the 14th at 7:30. We need a motion to accept. Deputy mayor, second, councillor Arnold. All in favor? Everybody? Anything arising from those notes?
An expression of interest on this project. Get part of this meeting?
Yeah.
You're asking if there's been any or?
Yeah.
No, I just met with the surveyor yesterday and we went over and surveyed what was going on there because we're subdividing that piece of land.
Uh huh.
The back piece is going to the depot as we had talked about before. So we're just waiting on some direction on that. So I'd say early next week we should be able, yeah.
Are we going to attend it?
Same way the other land has gone, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Did you make any contact with Jim Blackwood?
Yes, I'm meeting with James on Friday. This Friday.
How?
Um, only a brief text back and forth, so no conversation yet. But he's aware of why we wish to meet and yes, we'll have that discussion on Friday. So hopefully now, early next week, I'll be able to give you an update on that.
If there's no other, uh, number 13 on the regular meetings here of April the 14th, uh, line painting obtained quotes intersection across those town center park and parkway. One against, I don't recall, uh, were you against that?
No, that's with regards to number eight. If you read on there, uh, recommendation number eight. That's regarding the boat launches.
Yeah, we had that conversation. Okay, time.
Yeah, no, I just read it there and I was looking at line painting. I was, I wasn't looking at the, uh, the bottom one there.
Yeah. So all, it was all in one motion and then?
Yeah.
You didn't feel comfortable at all?
That's right.
Okay, anything else? Okay, the next meeting is a council meeting, a special meeting on April 21st at 1:00 PM.
Group for adoption.
Second by Councillor Paul, all in favor? Everybody? I'll read the minutes into the record because of course that was a a meeting that we had ourselves. It wasn't open to the public. And this was, like I said, April 21st at 1:00 PM. It was, uh, the engineers were there at Ridge Edges and John Buck from DMG. The meeting was called to discuss the water storage tank project. And the report by DMG was, is attached. The town to make a decision, this was at the end of the meeting. The town to make a decision on the location of the storage tank at a future date. In the meantime, DMG is to provide additional information on a bypass for the booster station, tank sizing and the potential need for chlorination booster on site of the tank. And the meeting adjourned at 2:30. So there's no, there was no motion, no particular item that needs to be voted on. It was just for information. Okay? The next one was another special meeting on April 21st at 2:30. And this was a meeting called to discuss the property repairs of Eric Orm at Alexander Crescent. Damage was unavoidable as a result of the repairs made to the town's water line by public work staff that ran across Mr. Orm's property. It was moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Paul. And based on the cost estimate provided by Mr. Orm's contractor and a price gathered by the town manager, by second contractor, council is prepared to offer Mr. Orm $19,000 for a replacement, repair replacement of retaining wall, lawn and other associated work. Upon acceptance of this amount, Mr. Orm will be required to sign a letter stating that no further claims will be entertained and the matter is closed. Again, that's, uh, was meant at the time. I think we just need a motion to accept the minutes.
Move.
All right, councillor Paul and councillor Kelly. All in favor? Everybody? Thank you.
When did we get the letter? Now that this is all.
Signed on.
So the letter was signed before I got checked up?
Correct.
Oh, okay, nice.
Okay, the next one.
Another question, just.
Oh, sorry.
On the same project.
Yep.
When we, if we put in the lines up there, do you think the great thing to do to move them lines where it's in there? Move them out? Because if we have another water break, we're going to tear all that up again. Then we've got to put in the lines, why would not move the line out?
There was a, there was a discussion around that, I think with DMG, I understand.
Yeah, well, if we were to move that line out, because right up Station Road, all the line that waves, it goes in quite a ways on some people's properties. If we were to move that line out, it would be a huge amount of, um, repair and replacement to do that. So.
Can you remove that section out? Just the section there on the line by his property?
Well, that, that section goes right on back down almost to Jolly View. Like after you leave the booster station, at, say, just past Jolly View, it starts going in across significant amount of personal property all the way up. So Eric's is just the very end of it.
Like you see this line breaking in there.
Yeah, the only thing is that.
Back into the very thing we're into again.
We, we will, we will have an alternate a line outside, of course, that we might be able to tap into. But, uh, right now, the money is not there to do that kind of work. To bring all those lines.
I know, but when we're doing that line, can we move with them just in front of that property? Because that's, that's the property that's going to cost the money. The other property. Yeah, but you wouldn't dig up someone's property right there, you're digging up a, it's only a big containing wall.
Yeah, I know, yeah, you got a big, big property, big.
If we were doing that on somebody else's property, all we would have to do is replace the sides. That's all we would have to do.
Well, some of them have got a concrete wall.
$15,000, but if that line breaks again next fall, we're back into another 19 or 20,000 dollars.
We can, we can discuss it with the engineers and see what the cost will be.
No reason why they can't tap into the line, bring it through the rail.
You have to cross the road right twice there to do that. Because the other one is going on the other side of the road, I understand, isn't it?
Yeah, that's the plan, yeah.
Oh, you know, I tell you it's going up the same side.
Yeah, no, no, I, my understanding, I, I.
That was our last meeting, this is.
That's what we usually do.
Yeah.
On the other side.
Up the other side, yeah.
Where you can cash more money, go up.
I don't know if that was the criteria, but I obviously said up the other side was less.
That's probably, that's probably.
It's a tie-in to.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's go and crash your private property.
Yeah.
Because I know we're, we're going to be paying again.
There's no doubt there's going to be problems in that all line, you know? But I think it's something that we need to do in a, in a separate contract, if you like, rather than try to do it now, right?
Very good.
The next one is April the 28th at 1 o'clock, another special meeting. And, uh, this is with the Public Works Committee. So I guess, uh, motion to adopt the minutes first. Councillor Arnold and councillor Kelly. All in favor? Everybody? I will, uh, read through, you'll bear with me for a minute or two, we'll read through it. Um, it was a consensus, first item, it was consensus that Public Works Committee meeting on Tuesday made a fort at 1:00 PM to discuss the following. Eagle Landing Road upgrading, domestic sawmills, spring public works priority list, cross down quickway RV dumping station, and John Mulrooney water drainage. There was a meeting, it was a consensus as well, that council meet with Paul Hatcher on Wednesday, May the 5th, 2021. The following are tender results for the town of Glover Town Gambow Eastport Road upgrading and paving. And it was moved by councillor Perry and second by councillor Arnold at the tend to be water drain one contracting with a low bidder at $673,889.08. Also, it was moved by councillor Kelly and second by councillor Arnold that the following change orders be approved. And the town manager reminded me, this is the split contract, of course, between the actual ditching and then the paving. So there was one change order in the amount of $2,188.52 and another to the amount of $2,945.80. It was moved by councillor Kelly and second by councillor Paul. And in response to an email from DMG dated April the 27th, council to engage the services of Scott Murphy Land Survey to identify an easement through property on Station Road for access to the proposed water stor- storage tank. It was moved by councillor Kelly, sorry, councillor Perry, second by councillor Paul. That based on information provided by DMG Consulting, council agrees that the proposed water storage tank be placed on Station Road. That was carried as well. Was moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Arnold at Kevin James Recreation Maintenance Employee be scheduled to return to work on May the 3rd. Carried. And then the meeting adjourned on, uh, by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Arnold at 1:50 PM. The next is a public works committee meeting held on May the 4th at 2020.
You're going to go back to this?
Oh, sorry.
You're going to go back to this one later?
No.
April 28th meeting?
Great. Your question, sorry?
Uh, yeah, could you just run briefly through the Eagle Landing Road Committee, what, you know, what recommendation the council is or the committee is?
Do you want to?
That's coming up in May.
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, we're not that one. I was going to say, I don't know where we are, so you're going to hit it, are you?
I, I think I'll, councillor Paul's referring to is number one, the, um, public works meeting.
Oh, right.
And that's, that's addressed in later minutes of May 4th.
Okay, that's fine.
It's fine.
I wasn't aware of that.
Now I am, that's, that's good. Yeah. Anything else? The public works committee meeting, I've made it forth at 1:00 PM. And there are several recommendations here and I think, actually, I believe there's eight of them. So they're probably going to require motions on all of them. So again, you have to bear with me, but these are public works committee meeting, uh, minutes only. Uh, first, a motion to adopt the minutes, please. Deputy mayor, second by councillor Kelly, all in favor? Everybody? First item, the recommendation is the RV dumping station for Wolf James. Approval be given for Wolf James to install an RV dumping station at 205 Main Street South, subject to the following. Service NL approval. Agreed upon location, application of plot plan to be provided. Tie into the main sewer line with an installed screen, public work committee employee to be on site. If sewer blockages occur in line from dumping station to the main, it will be the property owner's responsibility. And a water and sewer fee will be charged of $378 a year. That's the first one, and that's what we need a motion for.
Move.
Second.
Moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Perry. Any discussion? I think we have a, a, a map or a plan there of where the.
Yeah, um. In this one here, he's requesting to be relieved of tax for 2021 sewer. That three seven, that, I guess, is that three seventy eight, you're referring to?
Yeah.
Uh, I think, first of my opinion, I think we should because this is to increase his business and we are on the side of, of business, of course. And I, I think we should do that in, that he's taken on the initiative to go and do that to relieve us of having anyone on Station Road. And I, I, I think we should give him that break here on that, that year.
Actually, he's been for, like, two years.
Yeah, well, okay, even two years, I mean, is that, you know? He's putting a lot into it himself.
What are we discussing now?
Well, are we setting the precedent? And that's the thing, somebody else can.
It's contrary to our regulations.
If we're trying to be business friendly, let it look at everyone as, as it comes.
Yeah.
Into, he's asked him for a request to have the $387.
Taxed from.
You, you said, said the precedent, well, any business that's going to benefit the town, maybe they should get a break every time. Maybe we're not business friendly enough.
But we do have, we do have business taxes, of course.
I know, what I was saying is that, you know, once in a while, we should be more business friendly and give a business that's investing in the town a break.
In fairness, there is something, I don't have it here in front of me, but with regards to new businesses setting up. If you meet, meet certain thresholds of a number of employees hired and those types of things, you could be excused some business tax, if I recall.
Business, I cannot water insurance.
No, and this, this wouldn't fit the bill because I don't think this is going to employ any additional people either, right? But furthermore, that, I don't think it's been done with any other business recently since I've been here in the last couple of years, that we defer taxes.
I think we're all sympathetic to the fact that he's going to invest some money, but what business starts up a project and doesn't invest some money? I mean, it is a, you know, it's, it's part of that process, so.
If we don't do it, if we don't square it, we just have the one up there again.
That's like worth $378 a year.
I don't know.
Well, if we shut her down, it's a business opportunity.
And we'll take it, but if we set a precedent, I'll guarantee you that, if we build a company that's going to want a free water insurance.
First year.
First or two, or two years.
What was going to do for a town, maybe she, come make them.
Well, that's a bigger decision than we have to make on this one now.
It would require an amendment to the present regulations we have in place, councillor Paul, if that was to be considered.
In the meantime, if somebody wanted to make a motion, if not, we'll, we'll go through the, uh, a recommendation that's there from the committee.
So what would the motion be?
Well, it would have to, I don't know if you can make it, can you make a legitimate motion in the meantime if it's against our regulations? Well, you can't really, can you?
We have to make a motion to review the regulations, I would expect.
That's the only thing you could do, yeah.
And this would be put on hold.
And this will be, or, or you could adopt this as is and then make an amendment, make an amendment later on or make a decision to write off the fee at a later time if it met the regulations.
You, you can't, you, you can't have a knee jerk reaction to, you know, we'd all like to see this work. We'd all like to see it put there, but I don't know.
It has to be consistent, it's gonna be.
It's gotta be consistent, yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we review the, the policy that the town has on.
Peas, go water and sewer.
Not water and sewer, no, on businesses.
This is the only thing we need.
New businesses starting up in the town as to how the town can, I don't know how to word the motion, in the sense that.
But technically, it is the new business, he's only expanding his own business now, he's expanding.
But he's not, he's not water, he don't get the water insurance, he not get the business.
I'm not, I'm not concerned with water and sewer, I don't think we should touch that at all. Water and sewers, water and sewer.
I don't expect.
You've got to do that, and we've got to go down to Steve Griffith down there, he's got to be, that new business opened up there this year. He's going to go down there and give him free water and sewer for a year, which is probably $2,000. I don't know how much he pays now. There are other businesses that started up, you know, in the last few years for water source.
I don't expect this will affect the business tax anyway. I don't expect that an RV dumping station would increase his business tax anyhow. I, I would be surprised if it would, uh, the business tax is based on your infrastructure and the value of your infrastructure. I don't expect that it would change that very much.
No, probably not.
No, I'm assuming that.
We do have a policy, don't we, on that?
We do have a policy, we have some regulations, yeah, that we do.
I, I know that the policy we have, in fact, Mr. James would not qualify for exemption under that kind of policy.
Under the, under, under the business tax.
Under the business tax.
I remember before we had, we put that new building up there, that grad.
Yes, yeah.
He came here looking for exemption from the water and sewer, because he had, his office moved water and sewer, but he wanted to tell it in the, in.
In the grad.
In the grad, and we said, no, you have to pay two taxes. And we got people here with, with, with hair songs that's paying two taxes. How do you, how do you get around them?
Anyway, we, we haven't, we haven't got a motion yet, I don't think, you were in the process.
No, I, I, I'm just saying that, and, and if he, if, cross down quickly or whatever they will, whatever they are, don't qualify, then that's, that's, they're tough luck, but there may be others. I don't know, I'd like to know what, what the regulation is on business tax.
The regulation, the regulation we have now applies to all businesses that, that start. So if anybody were interested or if anybody, you know, it's there, I, I think we would, we would make that effort to get.
There was a, there was a regulation back, way back when, Dave, I don't know how long ago. In which there was a, there was a percentage, I think, to new businesses.
Yeah, well, we, we have that now, we have.
That's been updated and it's, so you need to employ 10 employees.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have it in front of me, councillor Perry, but I can certainly bring that net forward to the next meeting if you wish. Maybe that's what we need.
Mister Mayor, that's what I was going to say, uh, maybe to move on from this here, this one here, we could have another meeting sometime to see what we're going to do for business.
Well, we can have a discussion around that.
Expansion or new, business expansion or new business, we can probably have a, you know, have a meeting on that in itself.
Sure.
I'll bring that information next floor.
Yeah. You can't bring competition with another business, that's the same thing.
This is what we should have been meaning to discuss, all right?
Yeah. All right, let's, uh, that's a nice, nice intermission. Let's move on now to, uh, the sewer dumping station again. And we need a motion to accept the recommendations that were, uh, provided by the Public Works Commission.
Moved.
Committee. Moved by councillor Kelly, second by councillor Perry. All in favor? Everybody? Okay, the next one is on domestic sawmills. And the notice on Facebook says, due to the increasing number of requests for domestic sawmills in town, we'll be developing regulations regarding these sawmills in residential areas. All requests to be put on hold. And that was the recommendation, of course, because we've had, how many?
Five.
Five since, and we've had some concerned citizens who've written letters about two of those. So I guess what we need to do is look at some regulations. This was a recommendation of the committee. Do we have a motion? Councillor, deputy mayor? Councillor Kelly? Any discussion? Before we move on with that one, because, uh, there will be an opportunity, of course, when we get the regulations for us to have a look at and discuss. All in favor? Is everybody there? Okay. The driveway net of property of John Mulrooney, uh, in that the proposed catch basin, we proposed earlier in the fall, I think it was, will not correct the water drainage problem. The property owners using the driveway are to be contacted to make changes to the driveway elevation to allow the water to flow off and drain into the existing ditch. Contact must be made with public work staff to determine exactly what work is required. So again, it was, uh, an effort to solve the problem there. And what we're trying to do, of course, is to make some alterations to the driveway that is the problem cause and see if we can solve that. So we need a motion, please. Councillor Arnold? Councillor Paul? Any discussion? Okay, well, all in favor? Is everybody? Eagle Landing Extension, Eagle Landing Place Extension, the engineer drawings will be required from the developer to determine what works required to bring this section of Eagle Landing Place up to town standards and then turned over to the town. So that's regular policy. Need a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Councillor Kelly, councillor Perry, all in favor? Everybody, that just follows our policy. Public work priority list, I'm not going to run through the list, but, uh, it goes through a list of annual activities and new work. You can see there, everything from ditching and sod repair to grubbing and doing work on the boat launches and so on. And again, we need a motion to have that work completed. Moved by councillor Arnold. Second by deputy mayor. Any discussion?
Shoulder maintenance, are we going to just, like, same as we did in Sanders Cove here, the last, last couple of years?
Yes.
To, like, some places where it's re-narrowed there?
Some places where it's narrow, or some places where it's washed out, so we've done other years.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Everybody? The next one, is the town manager to contact Transportation Works to discuss the possibility of using the $50,000 promised for the intersection upgrade now to be earmarked for repairs to the manhole and pavement net of property of Glover Town Mainway at 6 Main Street South. So that's the money, of course, that we had put aside several years ago now, or we talked about having put one side. I don't think we've got it all yet, do we?
We haven't received that 50.
Haven't got any of that 50.
It was a promise.
But it was a promise. So we're asking that, we're asked that that be put towards fixing up the, uh, the turn, I guess, in front of Irving. We have a motion? Before we have a discussion, councillor Arnold, councillor Kelly, any discussion?
Did we make any contact yet with, uh?
No, because this is the way it used to go. Everybody's okay with that, all in favor then? Everybody? Okay. Contact been made with Scott Murphy to reestablish the boundaries of the town property formerly of Rod's made of 25 Station Road. Again, that was in preparation of the bids going out, requiring the bids to come back for, uh, for that property. Need a motion?
Move.
Councillor Paul, second. Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody? And the town manager obtained quotes materials to install a two rail fence at the town property at 9 Station Road, formerly the Dobbin property. And again, that was the one we said at the last meeting, we'd turn to a green space. So now we're thinking we put a, a two rail fence there. So we need just to get quotes for that, we need a motion, please?
Move.
Deputy mayor, second, second by councillor Kelly, all in favor? Everybody? Okay, thank you. The next one is a council meeting held on May the 6th at 1:00 PM. And again, a special meeting, this was with Paul Hatcher, if some of you remember. Need a motion to accept the minutes, please?
Move.
Councillor, councillor Arnold and councillor Kelly.
Was I wrong in thinking that that meeting was a privileged meeting, that number one?
There was no indication that it would be, I don't know, anybody, uh, staff?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
He, he didn't seem to indicate any concern in terms of it going public. Okay. So the first, the, the, the meeting, I'll just run through the minutes again. The meeting was called to discuss Mr. Hatcher's plan for engaging Habitat for Humanity for build, to, for build in Glover Town. Mr. Hatcher still has some work to do in the name of establishing clear title to the selected land, however, he wanted to gauge council's interest. Was moved by councillor Arnold and second by councillor Paul. That council support in principle. However, they requested a meeting presentation from Habitat for Humanity organization or representative prior to any decision. This would occur after the land, the title to the land is established. Uh, councillor Paul and councillor Hatcher left the meeting and there was two or three other items that's afterwards, but we'll stop there for a second and just have, I guess that was a council meeting, so we don't need to adopt it, but we haven't adopted the minutes yet, have we? So we need a motion to adopt these minutes first, please?
Move.
Councillor Kelly, deputy mayor, all in favor? Everybody?
Question on that now.
Yes, okay.
If I can understand it clearly, when he requested a meeting or we requested a meeting, he, he indicated that he couldn't get clear title to the land. Therefore, he wanted to work at it this way. But now, in these minutes there, we're saying, after clear title is established. So if he can establish clear title.
My understanding.
Why can't he go ahead and do what he had intended to do in the beginning?
My understanding is that he thinks the lawyer for Habitat Humanity will accept what we have in terms of, what we've always done in the sale of property for tax reasons. He thinks they might.
So clear title to Habitat, you know, for Habitat for Humanity, clear title to them might not necessarily be clear titled.
Anybody.
Or selling it or reselling the land.
It, it may be true, I don't know.
Satisfactory title.
Satisfactory title, yeah.
Or title insurance.
Yeah, and then title insurance, yeah. But it's an interesting thought. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move to item number two, which was the second part of that meeting. Was moved by councillor Arnold, second by councillor Perry. Council will once again offer $100 in prizes to be used in a spring cleanup contest. This would be used to engage, encourage participation by residents. That's for information purposes. And in response to Newfoundland Powers application called for Environment Fest 2021, was moved by councillor Kelly and second by councillor Arnold. That council applied for funding in the amount of $5,000 to beautify the green space located at 25 Station Road opposite the town mall. And this is just for, uh, information that needs to be read into the record. And that takes us to the end of the minutes. We'll move to deferred business. Anything new on tight posts with apple terrors? This will pen. Anything new on tight posts with apple terrors, municipal amendments?
It's in the final stages.
The final stages. How long does the final stage last?
Not as long as the other stages, hopefully, it's been a while, but, uh, it's been moving along, I think you even spoke to land planner just last week, wasn't you?
I have been following up, giving my nudge, but it's soon.
And the zone change for tower question, anything?
None new.
They're still going through motions, it's not as far along in process.
Right, the RV dumping station, we've had enough discussion on that one, I guess, I guess that can come off there now, can't it?
In the event that, uh.
Maybe not.
In the event that he doesn't go ahead with this dumping station, what were we planning to do?
There will be a decision council will make, I guess.
At another meeting?
At another time, yeah, well, we won't know what they're gonna do for some other time.
My question, I got a question.
All right.
If he, if he goes in with it, it was not gonna act more than that.
Hmm. No.
If he say, if he don't get it up and running till the middle of July, what do we do up to the middle of July?
We could, I mean, it would be.
So if we open that one up till, he gets it, if he goes in.
If he decides, said he's going to go ahead, it's gonna take a while, I don't see why.
I think we should.
If we do, we should put a lock on it, let somebody use it, come here and get a key. That, tell them, like, if you're from out of town, use it all the time, that was our big problem, because we said that, out of town, we was coming down here, dumping, going on.
When you, when you do this, you got someone coming in after five o'clock in the afternoon.
Well, then you don't.
Or Saturday or Sunday.
Or Saturday or Sunday.
Well, you're done, in terms of council, obviously.
Whatever we do, I think we should open up.
We have, we have already, we have already.
Until, until, until Walt changes his mind.
All right, well, we'll, uh, we'll cross that, let's not make too easy decisions, because we may not make.
We should open, anyway, we should face it up regardless.
Do not need to make that one. Uh, the next one, deferred is a review of the policies for subdivision extensions, or extensions rather, to existing roads and water sewer. I think, I don't think it's happened on that one, and then the land on one forty-five, one sixty-three, we just read the information on that one from Paul Atcher.
Question, question.
Yeah.
My property, civic address is two ninety Main Street South. And the ones across the road is one, is one forty-five and one sixty-three.
You, you don't understand why that is, I'll explain that to you very simply, more houses on right-hand side than the left, councillor. Odd numbers on the left, even numbers on the right, so obviously there are more houses from the start, number two here at the corner, down to two ninety than there are on the left, down to one forty-five. That's why.
Now, if you have any trouble finding your house, then I'm sure there are a number of councillors who will do what they can to help you.
Even numbers on the right, odd numbers on the left, that's why.
Yeah, I know that, but used vehicles.
No, it, it probably would in a town like Gander where the houses are all in lots of a hundred-foot frontage. But in Glover Town, when you have a hundred-foot frontage and four hundred-foot frontage, then sixty-foot frontage, it varies.
Going right back to the woods.
It varies Main Street South and more.
We need to find somewhere for the helicopter.
Yeah.
Get a GPS or.
Okay, let's, uh, move on then to, uh, is there anything else now in terms of, uh, Bonnie Perry and the water leaking going there?
There's been nothing new, the last conversation I had with her was with regards to what council's offer was, and she said she wanted to speak to her plumber and some other folks and get back to me.
So she hasn't got her.
That hasn't happened yet.
Oh, okay, we'll leave it there, I guess.
Yep.
All right, we're down then to permits and crown line applications, um, the first one is an application to operate a business by Robin Sweetapple, a dog care business. The, uh, permit committee met, and the chair, councillor Arnold, read the decision.
Okay, a recommendation or a motion made, uh, that, uh, s- that the application for dog care place would be accepted with the zone, with the proper zoning done and the, uh, advertise.
Advertise, go, yeah, okay. So that's a motion, then, councillor Arnold?
Yes.
I'll second.
Seconded by councillor Kelly, any discussion? It's one, one dog, uh, at a time, apparently, everybody okay with it, all in favor, everybody?
Be advertised, is it?
Be advertised, yeah. The next two, A and C, is a letter from Tony Saunders, domestic sawmill, and a letter from Tony Smart, domestic sawmill, I guess both of these fall under the provision that we read a minute ago in the minutes that, uh.
They'll be deferred until.
They would be deferred until we. Okay, so that was a recommendation again from the committee, we don't need a motion. I think what we read at the last one was that the staff would come up with a list for us, and that we would have a chance then to bring it back maybe to the committee and then to, uh, to council, so, that's, that's in the works. So we're down to reports, and, uh, I guess the town manager.
Okay, ju- just a few items, the first one, we've had some, uh, contact by a company wanting to come in here, actually, it said, it's a traveling dental business as such, right, uh, they're legitimate, they travel throughout Newfoundland Labrador, they're looking at setting up in this area, maybe not particularly in Glover Town, but in this area, so they reached out. Uh, so I got myself and the town clerk and others speaking about out-of-town businesses having to have a vendor's permit, operate in town. And from what I gathered, there was some chatter about that some time ago, maybe even some vendor's permits that had been set up, but kind of, um, it's, it's no longer a thing. So I, I didn't know how council felt about that, if we wanted to do anything with out-of-town businesses coming in to set up. Particularly like, for example, the dental, we have a dental office here paying taxes, and then you have somebody coming from out of town setting up on the corner, should they be required to get something?
Should certainly know who's in town doing business, so whether we charge them or not, we should have a list or, or, you know, know.
What, what other towns do it, situation like that?
Most, the larger centers all would have vendor's permits. Some of the smaller ones, it's hit or miss, because of course, this applies to the Appleman, it applies to the dental office, you know, so it's quite a few, the fish tailers, the fish, all of those, right, so.
The fish, the fish truck.
The fish truck, yes.
Well, we could have an annual, uh, vendor's permit for that, like, if, fish truck, once that starts, it usually comes every Tuesday. So you could have a set fee for a one-day vendor, and you could have a, as, a seasonal fee for a vendor that's coming every Tuesday, if council saw wish, right, a lot of towns, it varies.
When we had the farmer's market set up, wouldn't, uh, that, the fish guy and everybody else go to that farmer's market thing, better than the last corner?
Only if, only if it's convenient time, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Probably be open on Saturday morning, so it won't be, uh.
He tells me that I'd be struck, be struck.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, could still have his truck there, but it would only be for a specific time.
Oh, yeah, under the, for the farmer's market, yes.
But I think we should have vendor's license for people coming in town and doing business.
Well, especially if they're committing a business in this community, it's down. Like the dentists, both the dentists are paying, uh, taxes to our town, then we're gonna have someone else come in, set up, and that charge them money?
Maybe.
Don't seem right.
Maybe the committee could look after that.
Maybe we should have the permit committee, yeah, maybe the permit committee should make a decision, and, and, uh, so the chair is okay with that to, uh, provide some, some feedback in terms of what we should do?
Does the fish truck, those tailors play?
Okay, nothing.
They have, I thought they had, I thought they had.
Years ago, years ago, years ago.
It's a years ago.
It's been done for a long, long time.
Yeah.
I remember when you said that.
I can remember Gus Purvis coming in here and being very upset over it.
Yes.
Because he was allowing that to happen.
Yes, yep.
Long time ago.
And legitimately sold, of course.
Okay, so we'll, consensus is that we leave it to the permit committee to come up with the policies?
With policy, you know, price, the charge.
Or price or whatever. Okay?
Okay, next, the rec trailer, that large trailer that was donated by Buddy Watson and the other fellers that, uh, we use for music fest. Um, that's gotten in a hard state, and moving it is always trouble, so every year we move it for the festival and then move it back, and we've had issues with people getting nails in their tires and stuff, and we have to get a, a large truck to move it, so, like Wayne Brifit's been nice enough the last couple of years, I think, and Gordon's before that, they volunteer to come down to move it. Um, but of course, we have this small shed right up there that's meant to be up on the rec ground, so we want to move that one up, but in order to do so, we need to move that, that large trailer. Uh, from speaking to Lori here in the office, who's also on the rec committee, and talking to Kevin James, our municipal worker.
You mean the events committee?
Events committee, I'm sorry, what did I say?
Right.
Yeah, close, but no cigar, yeah, so the events committee, so they've talked about this now for some time, and I think it was raised last year, but talked about moving that trailer to the outfield wall and incorporating it into, I guess, the outfield wall, so it would be a continuation up on the.
Off field.
The ball field, so they would, they could drop the, the stage, I guess, over the outfield wall, so when the festivals are on the go, they wouldn't have to move it, and when the festivals aren't on the go, they close it up.
Perfect.
It would almost be like, I don't know who's familiar with Fenway Stadium, but you know, like the Green Monster, it would just, it would just be there.
The man is already here for it, so.
And we can put it up on blocks.
It's, uh, not a whole run.
So you're, uh, asking for council's.
Well, I just wanna know, before I go, like, pursue, like, we'd have to skirt it in, probably put it on blocks, it would be nice if we pretty it up a little bit. Um, but before I go down that road, I wanna know if council has any, nothing was budgeted for this, I don't know what the cost is, but at least I can go and explore and get back to council with some ideas. Well, that's the other thing, maybe they might be willing to depart as well.
And we use our employees, the council memo, I would say.
Yeah.
Okay, so consensus that you.
I think it's a good idea, if you so.
Consensus, let me check it out and see what, what needs to be done.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, and finally, there was an application we put in, uh, short time ago, there was, um, two hundred and fifty thousand out for healthy communities, we had talked about extending on the town center lighting, bringing it from basically where it is now right on down to East Globe, Farmer Choice, um, so we were denied, it was highly competitive, we got an email back today, uh, Pam was telling me. Uh, this was, wasn't one that went out nationally, so we were competing against downtown Vancouver and Toronto, so, we're not really surprised we didn't get it, but from those that were approved, it seems to have more of an emphasis on healthy communities. So our rec director was thinking perhaps we should change gears and maybe apply for something as opposed to street lighting, uh, maybe apply for something like the playground flooring, which we had talked about, which makes it accessible and safe and those types of things, or, uh, a pump track for bicycles, or some other suggestions with regards to walking trails, but something other than what we've already tried, or we can reapply for exactly what we've asked.
What about the trailer?
Doesn't really, it's, so something, no, healthy communities, it has to do something to encourage recreation and those types of things.
The trailer is sitting where we're going to.
How about a walking trail in Montcalvery?
I don't think they do trails, it's not that many I've seen, but.
We'd have to have a license occupied as well.
They did send some examples, and most of it deals with, uh, you know, taking an area of, of a community and, and just up to, upgrading it, putting in seating and, and grass and so on, and we've got our town center for us, so we can't, I don't know of anywhere else we can do that, but I don't see any reason why we'd, I don't see any point in putting in the application again for the lighting, because you've turned it on once, no, and I think it was too expensive, to be honest, anyway.
But can we get money for walking trails, is that, that's recreation, so?
No, no, I don't think, I don't, there's not even today's sign, any of the information that dealt with that. But now, if it's, if it's walking to our community, getting people to, to, uh, walk through, uh, uh, you know, older citizens and so on, walking around the community, it might be up to get something.
Whatever do I, no, we talked about the walking trail in the stadium.
Yeah.
You'd aim that before we got Dr. Reynolds.
Yeah, I think there's always been some engineering issues dealing with that.
Did we ever have the engineers look at it?
Probably not, only among ourselves, you know.
We, I don't think, right now, the Gander team is not much higher than ours.
I, I briefly had spoke to one of our engineers at the time, uh, I think it was P E C at the time, can't be quoted on that, but anyhow, it was someone I had spoke about. Again, just preliminary chats about it, the thing is, that structure when it was built, it was built as a frame, it wasn't built as something that would support weight in the top. So it was very different than a, like a Gander stadium or whatever the case, the way the walls are constructed, and the height, there was some issues as well as, it's not heated and there was a bunch of different, uh, a bunch of different things that came up in that conversation, but again, it was only a, an early conversation.
But Gander's theme is that the theme design is ours, the walls and everything is built, very thing is ours.
But, but, but that walkway was designed with the.
With the stadium.
With the stadium and built with it from the beginning.
Anyway, this, I think.
But we're not doing amateurs, if you give a professional opinion.
This gotta be, uh, I think this gotta be in, uh, open again Friday, so there's not a lot of time for us to get engineering work, so we're pretty much.
Can we give a professional opinion on this later on, at a later date?
Sure.
That's how engineers have a look at it.
Well, let's talk about this, this application now, what, what would you prefer to see done, is there any?
I don't know, what, what we can put it in for.
We got a couple of suggestions there in terms of the playground and the, uh, what was it?
Uh, like a pump track for bikes, they've talked about that.
Like something like that, I mean.
St. John's just approved a bike track, uh, pump track in there this week.
That's a pump track, yeah.
So it was, so it's like, um, for BMX bikes or mountain biking, and it's.
It's a small area with.
It's an oval with bumps and jumps, not so much jumps, but it's, uh.
Almost like a skate park, I think.
Yes, quickly to a skate park for bikes, yeah, yeah, sort of thing. But Esport has one.
Probably what we can do is just, if, if everybody's okay with, with those recommendations, if anything else comes up in the next little while, next week or so, if you've got, if you wanna make some suggestions, and I'm sure that our recreation director would, uh, would love to hear what you've got to say, so, perhaps if everybody, if there's no disagreement with those items, we can move on.
You want to pick one of them?
Yeah, if there's anything else comes up, let's, let's try, try with that, you know?
So just for clarification, now, when I speak to our rec director tomorrow and she gets started on this application, where am I asking her to head? Cause, so I gave two suggestions, pump track in the playground floor, is there one you have preference?
I, I, my knowledge of what's there, you're, you might have a little bit more luck with the playground. But, uh, I don't think you'll have much luck with the, again, I'm, I'm just based on what I, what I read of the program, right?
Hmm.
I would say go with the playground itself, that would be my choice, for that money, not saying there's any better than the other ones, but.
So this playground stuff, that's the soft flooring, the all-season flooring that goes there, right, so it's wheelchair accessible, it's safe, those types, you see them in all the major playgrounds, Gander just refinished more.
Yeah, they got it down east for one of the beaches down there, but.
Yeah, for, yeah, wheelchair accessible beach, yeah.
It's great out here. Outside beach, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, anybody with suggestions other than that? All right.
That's it for me.
Oh, you're done, good for you. Councillor Paul?
Nothing.
Councillor Perry, surprising.
I've not even watched the news lately, but Corner Brook has done a fantastic job with that sign that they've got.
Oh, yes.
And I don't know whereabouts it is in their town.
Got on West Street?
I don't think it's in the beginning, like hours is like that. I don't know if in future we should look at something like that in our town center or somewhere farther down. I'm not saying that we go and spend sixty-five thousand dollars on a sign, but something, it doesn't have to be a sign, it could be some other, other identification, you know, and, uh, apparently, the sign that they've got in there, every letter, has certain indication of what Corner Brook is all about.
Good to hear.
So, I, I think maybe that down the road, we should take a look at, at, uh, doing something like that. You know, I'm not making any, that we suggest tonight, but it's something that we should take a look at.
No, 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 it's interesting, yeah. Okay.
And I, I might be jumping in, somebody else might, I just bring up, I don't know. But, um, and I don't know if we can do it, do it on an individual basis, or do it on a, on a group basis, or do it, whatever you like, but, uh, the, the job that Kevin's tried, that done on his property down there.
I had, I had a note made that.
Okay, I didn't know you were gonna bring it up or not.
You carry on, you, you carry on.
You screwed up bringing me to council, I told you.
I tried not to.
I didn't know, but, but I, I, I thought we, I didn't know if we can go out and personally thank.
I think we should send a note of, of.
A note on something, indicating that.
Note of appreciation for the work that he's done.
Appreciation for what is done, and maybe we can take a look at other areas where people have done.
Well, we have, we have done that in the past with a couple, with one or two places, but he's.
Well, we might, Rob Wood has done his graduate.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's right.
Or, or, or even, yeah, businesses or, or, or individuals.
I think what's nice about it too is he's put a welcome sign there, so he's, he's made it open to everybody, not like this is mine, kind of thing, so he put a little welcome sign there, win and sit down if you want to, and he's encouraging it. So maybe Gerald's made a motion then, so we have a second there, councillor Kelly, that we would send a note to, uh,
Kevin, Kevin Stroud.
Kevin Stroud, and, uh, thank him for his efforts and appreciation of what he's done, all in favor? Everybody?
That's it for me.
Councillor.
I don't want anybody else, but I'm getting a lot of people stop me and tell me about, uh, tractor trailers and trucks, uh, dump trucks leaving town all the time. And it's using me all the time, I gotta agree with people that tell me about, we got the iron rod.
Yeah, we got a letter tonight.
I don't want a letter here, but, uh, something had to be done, we gonna have, have a meeting with the R C and B or something?
I see every day, and I'm really scared because, uh, Will got a couple of kids across the road, and their grandpa's up the yard there, jeez, and those big trucks, you can't, they're fucking alive.
He was up and out of the house there.
And they, these type of trucks are in there flying down there.
I don't know where I am.
Felt like it is.
It's a mid-truck still, it's a mid-truck.
But maybe it's, uh, maybe it's a conversation we need to have with the police and, and just ask them to, uh.
I don't know either.
And just went down, and, and highways for, for weight. But there's no, there's no limit to what weight they kind of were those trucks, and they drive over not, not only our roads, but the highways, roads and that's what, that's what ruined the famous of that. You know?
So consensus that we'll make contact with the R C and B and, and see if we can have a meeting of, of, because I, I've had the same thing, people have complained to me, of course, you meet them on the street, you know, about speeding. Uh, I haven't heard so much about trucks.
I haven't heard nothing but cars or anything like that one.
Big trucks is a big one.
Big trucks and, uh, and there's some big trucks, you'd have some big trucks, end of dump trucks, and the tractor trailers, heavy, heavy equipment.
Oh.
Yeah, well, they, they do, uh.
I went down the road one day, a tractor trailer pulled, went down the road ahead of me, I was doing fifty, and he pulled away from me, this was one of the big semis, big tractor trailer.
Um, we could do, we, we can make contact, of course, with the R C and B, do you feel that it? Do you feel that it would be water on a wall to make a note to the contractors or to town?
I'd be stood for the contractors, I'll read you.
Yeah.
I don't think, they're aware of the drivers, I mean, drivers are saying I don't speed or something like that, but I guess they're paying attention, cause I mean.
The motion?
Consensus is okay.
Consensus that we would, okay, we'll, we'll do the police and then we'll, we'll send a note to the contractors, local contractors.
Yeah.
And ask them to make certain that their drivers are following the, the, the speed limits.
And make them aware of the concerns that we've received.
They, 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 times is very valuable, I know that, when you're a contractor, you're still.
So is the young's life.
That's exactly.
That's right, exactly.
No excuse for it.
No excuse for it.
Absolutely not at all.
Okay, uh, anything else councillor Kelly, councillor Arnold?
I have one thing, but I saw, it's on Facebook today about the state of dad dropping whatever around town.
Yeah, yeah, it's on Facebook today.
Yeah. Connie, it's her Connie, right, no? Goes around every day with a bag, picking up beyond her days, cause she just can't stay and see it here. And, uh, gets down in park.
Hmm, a lot of people not doing it, of course.
Well, we, we.
They publicize it, hopefully.
This is unfeasible, it's in their day.
Yeah, which else would you enjoy? Deputy Mayor?
Uh, the yellow chair, where is it?
You mean the blue chair?
Blue chair.
Uh, blue chair, yeah.
Not, just not out here.
Uh, yeah.
It's just not put in, it'd be outside. I'd say.
It's in the shade.
Yeah.
Huh?
It's in the shade.
In the shade, isn't it?
I'd say before the long weekend.
Yeah.
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 Okay, and I had one item that councillor Perry beat me to it, so we'll move then to correspondence.
Do you meet them before you come up?
Yeah. Um, the first item is a letter, a couple of these items we've already dealt with in some degree. It's a letter from Phyllis Higgins, and the first item she deals with, of course, there's two of them, they're domestic sawmill operation. Uh, one on Station Road and one on Baby Oates. So again, both of those, of course, are into the, uh, mix now of waiting for the regulations. So I guess we can, um, leave it there until the regulations come out and then we'll, uh, we'll see how that works out. The third issue again is the one we just talked about, it's, uh, in this case, it's Orms Ready Mix on Baby Oates. And she's indicated, of course, that, uh, the equipment needs to slow down. So she's echoing the same concern that we just heard. And again, with the comment, of course, that these things can't stop on a, on a dime. So I guess, uh, we'll, we'll make in contact with the contractors and, uh, with the RCMP, so that should cover that one at least for the time being. The fourth one is a different one, it's Gordon Scrapyard. And she says the noise generated from their equipment and lifting, crushing, banging and crushing, crashing and crushing. The noise is always there and of course she says too that they cut down a ring of trees around the outside, which is, uh, it seems to make it worse now, of course, cause it doesn't, uh, doesn't muffle the sound. She mentions two things at the bottom, the safety issue, and that's one with fire and kids playing in the, the vehicles, old vehicles that are there. I don't know if anybody's got any suggestions as to what we deal with or are we dealing with that one? We could ask the town manager, I suppose, to check out.
Is this scrapyard on Baby Oates?
No, but it, it extends down back there, so I guess.
It says borders and property, it says, on the back.
Okay.
Roots are then, uh, really old, I don't know, you have to really old.
No, I heard in the.
Gingers Road.
Gingers Road.
Gingers Road.
No.
That Hawk and Road, so.
No, Hawk and Road. When you go near the, the property, uh, borders on his property.
Okay.
But we do have a noise policy.
Well, yeah, well, late in the mornings though.
This is daytime, this is there, it is.
Yeah.
I'm saying we do have a noise policy that he, that has to do with what, seven in the morning till?
Eleven PM to seven AM.
Eleven PM to seven AM, the noise, so that's what, that's what I.
You mean can't be noise for a little bit, much?
That's, that's how we can do it.
Seven.
After eleven o'clock, the noise, seven in the morning.
Yeah, seven in the morning, yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, I mean.
If it's happening in that, in these, these times.
Yeah, I, I don't know, she didn't indicate that that was a problem, she's, she's suggesting that it's, uh, it, the safety issue, of course, I think is one that's more concerning to me than the noise, and that is, of course, for the kids and the, uh, fires and so on.
Yeah, but that's his responsibility, like, are we responsibility for the old mill? It's his responsibility for the safety of his yard, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, but now we've got a concern that's raised with us, what are we doing?
Yes, I know, I understand that, but when it comes right down to it, uh, we should responsibility.
Should we tell them that we've had a concern?
Yes, of course, of course.
Contact them.
So we make contact. We make contact with them and tell them we've had a concern about the safety and the, and the fire and ask them if, uh.
And the noise.
And the noise, yeah. Should the town manager look after that for us?
Not what you can do with the noise, we got equipment, they're break up steel, that.
Uh, did you? Right, so I want to also have a conversation with the owners as well around what permits they have, particularly from the province and Service N L, because of course if they have, um, for example, their disposing of oil tanks or whatever the case is, they have to have certain disposal, you know.
Protocol.
Yes, requirements that are in place to, to do that properly. And I'm not aware, and of course I've always been in this position for less than three years, so I'm not aware, I have dealt with them. So I don't know what's been in place and what, what has been permitted down there. Uh, but it seems, as a resident of Glover Town, I've seen it evolve into something that had very, very small beginnings and it's turned into something much larger now. And I don't know exactly what permits are in place for them to be operating that, which it may be a hundred percent legitimate, but I, I want to do a little bit of work in and to see what's involved with it, so this could probably be part and parcel of that, yeah.
All right, so we'll, we'll bring the safety issue, I think, to their attention sooner rather than later in the meantime, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and of course a letter will go back to, uh, Phyllis in relation to those items. The next item is, um, the Municipal Assessment Agency, this is an update from them, which is just for information purposes. Uh, and again, it has the, uh, list of the directors of April twenty twenty-one. The Municipal Assessment Agency, through your information. The next item is a letter from the town of Grand Falls Windsor, Windsor, related to family doctors. And, uh, they're asking us to give them some information and feedback about the situation in our community in terms of, uh, whether citizens do have family doctors and so on. So I guess we can ask the town staff to make a reply, is that, would that be acceptable to everybody?
We got a, we got a lot of people here haven't got a family doctor, I hear it's from town to town, people have.
There's a fair number.
Family doctor.
Fair number.
You go to Dr. Camille, but he's not your family doctor.
Dr. Morgue is taking a lot of, is, is.
Taking some now.
Yeah.
So we leave that to the staff?
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
To respond. The next item is again in relation to Wilf James, and this is previous information that we had from him. And of course, that's kind of, uh, redundant now that we've already talked about it. Uh, the next item is the Royal Newfoundland Stabulary, and this is in relation to, um, their support for their publication, I believe, um, what's it called? Their Iron Seat Guide. Did you ever do this before?
Yeah, but they're not in our region, sure.
This saw Newfoundland though, the doc, the documents that go out. Uh, we have in the past on one or two occasions over the years, we typically don't from year to year, but.
Yeah.
We've been looking at what it is that the guide is about. They should are talking about, uh. Yeah, including another donation to the Kids Help Phone, which provides twenty-four seven support and counseling for young people to help get the help they need. Last year, children in Newfoundland reached out to the Kids Help Phone over twenty-eight thousand times, which is ten thousand more times than in two thousand nineteen as a result of COVID challenges. So this particular guide is going to be about, uh, suicide prevention awareness. So I don't know if council wants to look at it as a special edition, I, I kind of feel that it is in.
It's a nice to support, um, yeah, nice to support that, if you're sure.
It will be a two hundred and ninety-five dollar charge to put our business card in. But we'll get our names in there and we would help spread the guide around, we get a few copies of the guide to put around.
Can I move?
Yeah.
I'll move.
I'll move by councillor Paul, seconded by councillor Kelly, any discussion? All in favor? Everybody? The next item is the RCMP, uh, monthly report, policing report, and that's again for your information. An interesting article is in that one, by the way, on the, uh, the, the media and the social media response to the break in in Glover Town. It's, uh, worth a while to read. The next item is the association, is from the Association of Early Childhood Educators inviting us to celebrate and proclaim early childhood education. So they're asking us, I guess, to do a proclamation that we do from time to time, it's May the third to June the fifth.
I do.
Seconded by deputy mayor, all in favor?
Move with John, Mr. Mayor.
Always. The last item, I believe, is a Make the Wish, uh, on the rock, and we've always participated in this one. I'm not sure what we did last year because of COVID, but I think we did donate.
Usually a hundred and fifty dollars the last two years.
And we maintain, we used to do some kind of a breakfast, but I don't know, we didn't do it last year.
The rock, the local wish group.
Yes, yes.
Uh, did the breakfast over at their fire hall, not last year of course, cause COVID. Uh, so we didn't have to do that, they provided all that, we did, the mayor presented the check for the hundred and fifty dollars. And I think one year we gave them bottles of water or something to go along with the breakfast, but, well.
Can I move that we, uh, do the same as last year?
Okay, second there. Councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody? Councillor Kelly, you're not opposed, are you?
No, me so.
Motion, motion to accept the cheque register? Deputy Mayor, councillor Arnold, all in favor? Everybody? Oh, I missed an item, sorry, let's go back.
You did.
Then at the bottom, I didn't have a copy, but, uh, emergency plan approval and the town clerk has a copy in her.
Uh, it's that time again, annually we have to do this. Uh, Lori and I have updated the contacts as best as we can for this. Uh, we do need to make a change, we have on our list of people, we have Gerald Perry and we need another councillor, because we had councillor Lynch. And our emergency council committee members and our emergency planning committee. We have the mayor, we have the deputy mayor, you're already there, Sandy and myself, and we have councillor Perry and the fire chief and Matt and our public works, that's our emergency committee and our planning committee. So we need another councillor appointed, that's the only thing that I've left, uh, left out, the rest is not updated, so.
Councillor Kelly, anybody else interested? We now must have a vote. What? No? Councillor Kelly, uh, has volunteered, I guess that's okay, would, do we, could we?